Board of the eight hundred and eighty eighth meeting of the board of directors of MSAD twenty seven.
Keith Jondro, here. David Perry, here. Toby Jondro, here. Barry Lutt, here. Gary Sibris, here. Sarah Ashley.
Here.
So it's just not here and we do have a couple of announcements. We have our student reps that are back on board. Caitlin's here. Tonight, we also have Gabby Martin that will be joining her. So welcome Caitlin. You're a pro at this, so please help Gabby know the ropes. And then the second announcement I have is we do have a resignation of a board member. Would you like me to read the letter?
Sure.
To the MSAD twenty seven school board chair, please accept this letter, a letter as notice of my resignation from the MSAD twenty seven school board effective October thirty, two thousand and twenty. I very much appreciate the support and camaraderie camaraderie provided to me during my time with the school board. I am grateful for the opportunity to have been a member of this group and to have a chance to impact education for our community. Unfortunately, due to personal reasons, I must step away. I thank you for my time here and wish you all the best as you move forward. Sincerely, Clarence Kersusi. I did speak with with town manager in Wallis Grass and I also sent a notice to town manager in Fort Kent because that district does involve both communities. And ask them to look at potential replacements for Mr. Susi and then I'll ask the same of you. If you know anyone who lives in that subdistrict. You can forward their name either to me or to one of the town managers.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments.
Public participation? Approval of minutes for the eight hundred and eighty seventh meeting?
Wasn't here, so I don't know.
Second.
Any discussions? Call those in favor. One except Barry, who was not here for it. If there's no objection, we'll do one motion for the approval of financial statements for June, July, August, and September.
Tomo.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Superintendent's report.
Just some school reintegration updates. For the Department of Education, just last night, we found out, or yesterday afternoon I should say, we found out that Governor Mills. Put out a change in her executive order for size limits. On back on October sixth, we were fortunate enough to allow our principals to have inside gatherings up to a hundred in the cafeteria and the gymnasium. As of Wednesday, that goes back to fifty per the governor's directive and that's because of the spiking numbers of COVID cases in the state. So that goes into effect, like I said, on Wednesday. Also, in that same executive order. The following states are no longer non-exempt states for testing when you come back from these states and go back to Maine, New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut. So you can no longer travel to New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, and not have to quarantine or take a test. They are now with all of the other states. The only exempt states currently is New Hampshire, Vermont, and Massachusetts. Although there's an asterisk near Massachusetts that says, we highly recommend you get tested upon returning from Massachusetts. So that's, that was just as soon as yesterday. On our. On our. Reintegration website, and I'll share my screen here. We do have. A new dashboard that we're featuring on our page where we are collecting data from the school nurses every day. Specific to our schools in Valley Unified, how many active or positive cases we have. How many recovered cases we've had and total cumulative cases. It's all zero right now, thankfully. And we hope it to stay that way. And this is effective as of September one, so that was the day we are officially populating this with. But I think what's most interesting is looking at the last two columns, total in quarantine waiting tests today. So every day, the nurses are showing us how many, how many staff or students are currently in quarantine waiting a test. And then how many cumulative tests quarantines were sent home for testing. So how many is that throughout the year? So you can see the various schools for your schools, Fort Kent Elementary and Community High School. You can see that your nurses have been very busy this year with sixty and fifty-nine separate cases being sent home for quarantine for testing. So having two nurses is definitely a blessing this year to make sure that all this work is getting done. The school nurses will also be conducting a or taking part in a John Hopkins contact tracing. It's a free program where they're going to learn how to contact trace, not to, you know, supplant what the CDC does, but just as a proactive measure locally. If we do have to do some of that, our nurses will be trained in that. So that's new as well. We do have. We do have some concerns around the state with the Thanksgiving holiday coming up. A lot of conversations from different school districts about how they're going to handle. School after the holiday break, specific to Thanksgiving, and many of the schools are considering moving to a remote. A remote plan temporarily. Some are saying one week, others are saying two weeks. Just because folks will be gathering for Thanksgiving. They will have family traveling from various different places. And it's very hard when you haven't seen loved ones for years to mask up and stay six feet apart. And so that's, that's just, you know, being realistic. I don't know that we have to take that drastic measure, but as an administrative team, we are, you know, really trying to press upon our staff. You know, talking to students about, you know, when they're out of school, what their behaviors are like. I'm going to continue to push that out with the information we're sending to families. But if at any time you want to entertain conversations around what we should do after the Thanksgiving break, we can have this conversation. I'm just not sure right now with the local members where they are, if if going to full out remote is, it's hard. It's hard to judge. But we're definitely keeping an eye on it. So that's one thing as well. Yeah.
Speaking of local members, it's kind of hard for the public to kind of gauge where our numbers are and what's considered. Because we're not necessarily decided to do valley instead of county. There's no place for the public to check in.
So we do publish that with our weekly information to families, but what I try to get people to do is is go to Northern Maine Medical Center. Which is our primary source of information for the local COVID numbers. And what I try to press upon people is is these three columns right here, positive results, recovered, and deaths. It's your positive results minus these two columns, which tells you how many active cases we have in in our region. According to Northern Maine Medical Center. So right now, there are two active cases as of today at four o'clock.
But that doesn't include Fish River or local people are going to get them tested at Cary.
It doesn't. They were combining their data together early on and then they separated. And to my knowledge, if Peter had it correct, I haven't been able to find where Fish River publishes their numbers.
I know we had talked in the beginning about like, well, I have two things. So one, you said you you put it in your weekly updates. But our trigger points are zero to five, six to nineteen. But you don't report them that way. So it'd be helpful if, because you do it as a percentage or something. So it'd be helpful to use that with a reminder of what our trigger points are. But then we had talked about doing it countywide and Dr. Kristin Hart had mentioned that she didn't think it was pertinent because, you know. Holton's kind of far, but we've been doing countywide sports. So I don't know. I just, I wonder if it would almost be easier to go to countywide, adjust our numbers appropriately.
Yep. So the way we talk about it is we actually use two matrix, two metrics. We do use the county. Which is the, every other week, the state puts out a color designation for all the counties. We have been green ever, ever, ever since. If we ever go yellow, based on the county numbers, the DOE will mandate we go yellow. So it supersedes the St. John Valley numbers. And then we have our St. John Valley designations, which is the six to nineteen for hybrid.
Now, is that, I mean, you said you don't know if Fish River Rural Health is publishing them or if there's people in. You know, not also going to Cary getting tested and then, I mean, are you guys accumulating that data too on a daily basis?
We were using the Northern Maine medical data is what we were using. Keeping in mind that, that the county designation is always in play, monitored by the CDC.
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks.
Yep.
But we can definitely change the way that we report that so it's clear for folks to see. And maybe, maybe that's something that Fish River can report out to us. We can combine that.
And maybe it's something that we consider, I mean, if we want to go use county numbers because it's provided for us or tabulated, especially if winter sports go.
When they go yellow.
No, we're going to meet three times and then they're going to go.
So, I don't know. This is as long as I have.
Yep. So along those lines, we are preparing our hybrid model. Given that things across the nation are rising, things in the state are rising. So we just want to really be prepared in the event that we have to go hybrid when we hit either the county designation or the local. Our, we are also looking at, you know, making sure that we're educating our staff regarding our remote learning plan, which is already in place with the remote learners that we have. But specific to the hybrid model. We're really taking a look at how we can sustain with cohorts. And basically, we're going off the model of what a lot of our Southern Maine schools are doing right now as they are in hybrid. We have three counties right now that are full hybrid and many school districts that are opting to go hybrid just because they can't create the social distancing. Just to remind everyone here, if we are given a yellow designation, the three, four, or five foot distancing that we currently have in play needs to go back to six feet. So I cannot have more than nine, I think, ten maximum students in a classroom at any given time if they're going to have six foot distancing. So right now, what your principals are working on is creating two separate cohorts, essentially splitting all of their class sizes in half. And we would be putting, putting a hybrid model in play where cohort A comes to school on Monday and Thursdays. And cohort B comes to school on Tuesdays and Fridays with remote learning options on the other days. Wednesday seems to be the best model. As that deep cleaning day where you're getting that deep cleaning in the middle of the week and then on the weekend again, so that you can keep your environment safe. We would be having our teachers still come to school and work, obviously, because they're going to have half of this, half of this. In this when they're here. But even if we go to a remote, we still would like to have our staff. And the staff are really, you know. We've heard from them that they would like to teach remotely from school rather than from home. We're looking at childcare options for our, our teachers if we have to put in either a hybrid or a remote. Because it's hard for our own staff to have to balance their, their children's needs with their, their students and their classrooms needs. So we're looking at that as well. We've, we've looked at as well how we can sustain the school lunch program if we have to go in this model. So working with Melanie in the kitchen, essentially cohort A, you're eating school when you're at school. And then when you leave that day, you're taking a couple of days worth of bag lunches with you. So that bag, bag meals with you, breakfast and lunch, so that when you're at home as a remote student, you do have meals for those days. So we're looking at that as well. But essentially, the cohort option is what we're looking at. We try to wrap our heads around how can we get maybe all of kindergarten, grade one, grade two, maybe even grade three in the facilities. And potentially look at cohorts for the others. But just in thinking about six foot distancing on buses, we have to go back to one student per seat. And I think, Peter, you said a maximum of twenty, if we do that. Peter, twenty?
Yeah.
Twenty. So the transportation would not allow us to bring in the entire kindergarten, grade one, grade two, grade three. So in everything, and then we had to wrap our minds around if we have some remote and some in, then we'd have to start delivering meals again. It was, the cohort option is definitely the one that, that makes sense and it's what's being done by other schools. Hopefully, we don't have to go there. Hopefully, the local members stay at bay and we can still continue to school, come to school the way we have been safely. But we just want to be ready. So those are all things that are currently in the works right now.
So Sarah, did you want to do anything different or?
I am open to discussion about it. I just thought I would bring it up. Things that I've noticed were things that I guess were concerning to me.
I was surprised. There was something in WAGM this weekend where Peter Zitoa.
Yeah.
Said that four positive cases last week in Northern Medical Center. And I guess I never, I didn't realize you have to do math. And. Anyone who had me in high school knows that that's a large thing to ask of me to do math. But yeah, I didn't realize that the numbers were that close. We came that close last week to reaching our six person threshold.
I thought the six person, six person threshold was associated with active cases within the school itself. Is it community?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we were like two people away last week.
Well, and then the wild card is what does Fish River have for results?
Or what are people going to get tested elsewhere get the results? If they're going to Cary, we don't get that either.
Right. I think, I think that's part of the reason too that we put the span six to nineteen so that, you know, if on Monday it's, it's six. Are we going to pull the plug on, you know, just based on that, especially when you might have one of those recovered, you know, the next day? So kind of just monitoring within that, within that level. But we can, we can entertain any change that you feel is appropriate.
I think part of our discussion around the numbers were. Like that six or five number needs to be flexible because it could be one whole family. Could be five people, right? And so we said that it was, we're not going to shut, we're not going to change the school model if it was five people from the same family. And we have a six active case, right? So that was some of the discussion we had.
We did.
How quickly would it change school? Could I be at school like one day and not to the next day? Like, could it be like what happened last year? You know what I mean? Like, are we still like that vulnerable to it?
It could. I, I hope that we would be able to have. Not such a spike that we'd have to panic like that. You know, if we trickle up to five, six, now we can start to inform people, hey, starting next Monday because of this, this is how it will. But if tomorrow, you know, the state of Maine says you're going yellow or blue to county, it's going to be a switch.
What are their numbers for yellow?
It's, it's.
They have a bunch of stuff.
I think what they mostly use is, is, is a percent increase from one reporting period to the next.
Which is kind of what you're reporting in your weekly thing.
Yeah. I know that there was an outbreak in Callis that prompted the DOE to put Washington County in a yellow. Not because of Washington County has a whole vast number, but because of that outbreak, they chose that as a.
I had someone reach out to me about. A student who had allergies and wasn't able to come in, for example. And there's been a few that, you know, flu season's around the corner, so it's something for us to think about. But. It didn't feel like there was a firm, well-established. Way to make sure that individual could come back to school. Because they weren't able to get a doctor's appointment quick enough to go get tested. And then by the time the weekend came around and the following week happened, they weren't symptomatic anymore. And they said the hospital wouldn't test them because they weren't symptomatic. So either the person at the hospital wasn't knowledgeable enough to say you can come in and get tested. Or is it true that you can't get tested at the hospital if you're not symptomatic?
I don't know how the hospital operates. I know that, that we have a blanket practice. And we tried to be proactive in saying to folks, if you have seasonal allergies, please update your file at our nurse's office. Because we have nurses that might not know you on a personal level like that. But we follow that flow chart algorithm. So if you have, you know, two low-grade symptoms or one major symptom. The recommendation will be for you to go home and monitor for twenty-four hours. If those symptoms do not clear up or they get worse, then you need to go see your PCP. Your PCP may say, you don't, you don't need a test. That's, that's all we need here at school. The PCP's saying, that's not recommended. Nine out of ten times, the PCP is saying, we're going to test you and wait for a negative result.
So what, so what happens then? Two weeks out, you can't get tested. What happens to that student?
That student engages in remote learning while waiting.
Okay. And that's very well communicated to the parents?
It did.
It must be. Wow, this, I hope so. Okay. And can we find out about asymptomatic testing at Northern Maine Medical Center, whether or not you can get in for testing if you're asymptomatic?
I don't think that's our problem. I mean, it sounds like, I don't want to involve ourselves. We got enough to do.
No, well, I guess when parents are asking and flu season's around the corner, we maybe have a rash of people who are runny noses. And we have a bunch of people who check out.
Our values can't change, right? We have to look at two low grade or one major and then refer you to your doctor. What you and your doctor decide is up to you guys, you know. That's the only way we can stay safe.
Okay, thank you.
Peter, Peter works with the nurses and.
Nurse, thank you.
So right now, what's happening is if a student has one low grade symptom or one symptom that's left home and associated with COVID. That is left to the nurse to send them home and say, basically, you can return twenty-four hours after your symptoms have disappeared without any type of medication. Okay? That's for one low grade symptom. Right now, in consultation with Northern Maine Medical Center. If you have two or more low grade symptoms or two or more low grade symptoms and one or more high grade symptoms. Or just a more commonly identified symptom that's associated quite commonly with COVID. Then the nurse is advising, go home, make an appointment with your PCP, and then the determination is made by the PCP. What we're hearing now, however, is that Northern Maine Medical Center is becoming very assertive about testing. Especially with the onset of the influenza season. So they are looking at testing. And right now, the turnaround time on testing, simply because of the volume that's happening across the state, is four to five days. Initially, it was three days. In most cases, we're looking at five days. And so then the remote learning option is made available to the students. And they're encouraged to participate in that remote learning during that five-day waiting period. We have heard that that waiting period may extend to seven days as we get into the much colder months.
This is the toolkit that the nurses actually use. And this is a DOE document that all the nurses. You know, you can basically follow, follow that flow chart. And it's all based on the most common and least common symptoms. And if you look at those symptoms, those are the same symptoms that are associated with seasonal allergies and the flu. And so it becomes very, very difficult to try to separate all those things. Which is why the best course of action is go see your doctor and work out. And PCPs can still point to an alternative diagnosis.
Thank you, Peter.
But they are being very assertive and aggressive with testing.
Okay. Do you want to ask for updates on Fish River?
I will ask for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think we should have any automatic trigger numbers. You can use them for guidelines, I think, but I think common sense has to play into this.
Absolutely.
I agree, Karen.
The other thing is, like, for me, is if we see a rapid, brief increase, like, I think we need to, as a board, respond to it. Even if it's, if we go from. Six to twelve in two days, I think that bears, even though we haven't hit the next threshold number, that bears, that we should pay attention to that, you know.
I think that would. I think that would spawn a conversation about, okay, what are we doing now?
Because I mean, if we have a church outbreak like they did in Waldo County, I mean, that's, I mean, that's all that started with, right? That's your spawn, so.
I'm curious about the buses as well. Like, we could bring our son to school if we chose to do so, but he likes riding the bus. And I'm wondering how much flexibility Peter would have if parents were more willing to drop students off, if we had to, you know, make sure we had enough bus space.
Right now, we, we're, we're getting it done with, with the, the no more than two kids per seat system that we're allowed to do in a green. What, what becomes tricky is if we go to yellow, we go to hybrid, one child per seat, what does that mean on certain bus runs? Um, and, and if we have to add a bus to a run, we will, but you're right, Jake. I mean, the, the more we can encourage parents to help out, um, the, the better it is. Absolutely. Be good on the close updates. I also included the CRF updates. I, I didn't know, I know I've given, I pushed out the CRF projects to you several times. I didn't know if you had any questions about some of those projects, uh, that you wanted to ask. One of them that goes right along with what Jake just asked, if you've been on Pleasant Street during student drop-off or student pickup, you know that it's quite congested, especially when you have a line of cars waiting all the way up by the school garage and parked them along sides of the road. So one of the projects that we have in play here is, um, is a connection behind the bus garage from, what's that street called?
Baker Street.
Baker Street, where the rec department is, uh, is now connected with our school driveway so that we're encouraging parents to drive down Baker Street now, um, to, to drop off and pick up their children at Fork Elementary rather than coming in through, uh, the, the driveway and looping back up by the bus garage, what we've been doing. So we're going to utilize Baker Street only during drop-off and pickup hours. The town wants us to kind of seal that off after those time, but, um, that's one of the projects that we, that we put in here and is that, is that completed?
It is complete. It was completed at the end of last week and, uh, so during last week, so our, our lobby's been working, letting folks know that this is going on and that we'll be able to start coming into Baker Street. We're hoping that we're going to have the pickup and the delivery both in the same direction so that we'll utilize that entranceway for both so that we don't plug up Pleasant Street, not by where the students are coming into the main part of the building as well. So we're, we're, we really looked at it closely and we're hoping that, well, I think you should start seeing some changes tomorrow, the, uh.
Thank you. Um, we've got some curriculum in here so that we can, um, you know, upgrade our, our, our reading curriculum at Fork Elementary School for the higher grade levels we've budgeted, for the lower grade levels with our regular budget. So we're going to do the higher grade levels and not have to budget it this, this, um, this winter. A lot of great, probably the, the entire, uh, security system in this building, um, or Mr. Dusette, he, he has to deal with cameras going out, um, you know, often because our system is, is getting old and it's, it's quite antiquated and antiqu, antiqu, yeah?
Antiquated.
Antiquated, thank you. And, um, we, we've been doing a good job keeping it up, but, um, this new system is actually going to really help not only with security, but, um, detecting students not wearing face masks. So a lot of really good features in that. Obviously, social distancing, furniture and some projects. We have a storage garage project for all of the added PPE that we have. We don't know if we're going to be able to pull it off and I was just asking Lucy if we can amend, um, projects. Hard to find a contractor right now that's going to guarantee, uh, to construct something by December 31st. We've looked at prefab units, uh, metal buildings, where, where we'd come up and construct it in a day, but these, these companies are booked, I mean, they're, they're just booked. So we're going to keep looking, but not quite sure. Uh, every water fountain in the district will be a bottled filling station, so we're going to upgrade the remaining ones that we have. With that, um, we're going to get a bus, uh, in this, in this project. We're getting a smart screen touchboard for every classroom, um, which is going to be upgraded, so the old smart boards, um, are going to be replaced with that. So really, really good projects. And I, and I, and we're going to get, uh, air purifier systems for every classroom, um, as well as an upgrade to our air handler system with some VU Light and some other upgrades for, for cleaner air. I just try to press upon people that these funds, you know, are not something that can supplant what we had in our regular budget. So we couldn't, you, we looked to, you know, offset our budget a little bit with this. We couldn't save it, right, to, to lower our budget for next year. Really, really restrictive and frustrating. Can't hire a whole bunch of folks with the money because, um, the CRF funds expire in December, so you can hire folks until that time, um, but after that, you, you, you can't. So kudos to the administrative team, working with their teachers and conversations about what they need and figuring out, um, how to spend this money the right way. It, it will help us in our budget process because like I said, there are some things that we did purchase with this that we were looking, uh, to fund in the future, such as curricular materials that we won't have to, so.
The storage, does the storage have to be new or can you buy an existing place?
I don't know.
It doesn't have to be new.
What's that?
I didn't think it has to be new, you just have to have them possessed.
For example, you, you get Scherritt's Building, which was quite a, quite a sight. I mean, who knows what, if anything is for sale or for rent, but you're just saying.
We're looking something at forty by sixty.
One in St. Francis, bigger than that. I'll just, okay, here we are.
Ben, I'm just curious about the, uh, pictures that students are taking that are going to the nurse's phone. Is that a personal phone or is that a school-owned phone? I'm just, I'm just worried about privacy concerns about having a student's picture associated with someone's phone.
Yeah, and it's, it's actually not, it's going to their email, so it's not their phone per se.
Okay, so the text alert is something happened and the picture goes to the email?
The school, the school email.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's only when there's, so oftentimes it's somebody holding a coffee and like, your temperature is 150 degrees. That's, we're getting a lot of those.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Harvest survey? Harvest survey, I gave you an updated survey, uh, probably at the bottom of your packet. It was probably the first thing that I laid down on the table. Um, I, I think, Mr. Coletta, we have just about a hundred percent participation in that survey. Nice job.
Yeah, the secretary staff, I think they're going down. It looks hard on the week.
Good. Um, so you could see in the results and I'll share them on the screen as well. Harvest survey. Three hundred and seventy-eight responses between grade seven and 12. Uh, you can see the breakdown by males and females who responded, uh, but this is the, the bolding question here, did you work on, in the potato fields or on a potato farm during the potato harvest? And we have, uh, thirty percent or forty-nine students that did participate in harvest. Um, we have about thirty-eight percent that didn't do anything for work-related and then about, um, forty-nine percent that worked other jobs. You can see the breakdown of farmers, where the kids are working, uh, on those farms. So, uh, GB and D Farms had the most students with ten. Then we had, uh, Rio Farms with seven, GNS Farms with seven as well. Another good question is how many days did you actually work? So out of those forty-nine responses, um, nine of them said they only worked one to five days. Another six of them said they only worked six to 10 days. So you're looking at the other, um, the other 27 that worked the full two weeks of, of potato harvest or more, because we did have some that got an extension. We had nineteen students that got a harvest extension, which essentially allowed them to work into that third week with a plan with the school to make up that work that they missed. Um, you can also see which jobs they performed on the farm and where our kids were working elsewhere when they were not harvesting. Seems like babysitting was the most popular job while not harvesting.
John Valley Tech enrollment.
Yeah, and this, uh, this came from a request actually from Sarah, just to look at the St. John Valley Tech numbers. And, um, you could see the, the historical, um, trend on that, that Kevin was, was able to go back to 2009 and, um, get every year from then on. So 2009, you can see the total students at the center was 184 and then from then, um, you know, it continues to decline. Just for comparison sake, your enrollment here at MSAD 27 in 2009, uh, we had 1,085 students in 2009 and we're down to under 850. So with declining enrollments in the school, obviously declining enrollments will happen at the center. This year would be the last page in your packet and there are currently 95 students in grades, uh, in the high school grades. And then you could also add another 30 for the eighth grade programming. Kevin didn't total, um, the eighth grade programming in there, but, uh, that would be 125 students if you, if you include those eighth graders in that. Um, this year, there is a, there are a couple new programs. Electrical construction trades, um, is, is a new program that they're trying and there's eight students enrolled in that program. The other new program is the heavy equipment program and that, uh, has an enrollment of, of four right now. And that's just a half-day program for heavy equipment.
What are the eighth graders doing there again?
They, they go for core, uh, they go for one, um, one quarter and they have a core health class, uh, that they, they participate in and then they have a core, um, uh, career opportunities class by JMG. And then they branch out and they, um, they get placed in the trades that they're interested in so that they can learn about those trades. Now, the point there was that we, we usually wait till the end of sophomore year, give an hour tour of the center and say, hey, do you want to go to the tech center? Well, with this, they get to, the eighth graders get to have a, an advanced view of what occurs there, uh, so that they can plan when they get to high school.
Uh, winter sports update.
Um, last week, Mike Burnham, uh, in, in the executive committee sent out a memo to the A.D.s. And the highlight of the memo is that, um, the winter sports season was supposed to start, start on November 16th, um, but they've now delayed that start, so it will not be starting on November 16th. We do know that the MPA is working much closer with the DOE, the Maine Superintendent's Association, at winter sports. We got another update today, uh, from Maine School Management that said, um, these are some of the things that the MPA is, is, uh, what they're proposing. Very similar to your winters, your fall sports guidelines, which would be, uh, a start of the season, um, at the end of November, early December, which would be more of, uh, activity-based exercising, uh, conditioning, no activity during that phase. Then by mid-December, switch to, uh, phase two, which would be practices within your team. After the new year, looking at, uh, the possibility of inter-team, uh, inter, inter-team games. So our, our teams commencing against ourselves, you know, as, as, as practice. And then I believe what they were originally looking at is the possibility of starting games mid-January, uh, with a, with your county only, very similar to the, the fall sports. And following the guidelines for, uh, crowds, which is going to be very difficult because the indoor gathering right now is 50. And so when you see both teams, their coaches, the referees and the A.D. and, and whoever else needs to be there, you might have room for 10 things. So it, it's going to be a tricky one if we move forward. That's for basketball. Uh, doesn't look like wrestling is going to go, much like football was not a go this fall. Um, that's considered a high-risk sport for COVID. Uh, skiing looks like very minimal, um, changes. The, the only thing that with skiing that would change is at, at, at any of the venues, there would be no gathering inside the lodges. Instead, they're proposing that the teams park their buses so that teams, after they ski their run or ski their race, they can go on the bus, uh, to warm up, uh, rather than going in the lodge. We'll see how it goes and the MPA is supposed to put out a formal proposal that's going to be approved by all parties and then we'll take that to you. That's the update right now.
Administrator report?
I believe you had attached reports. I, I do want to allow, um, two administrators to just talk a little bit unless you have questions from the others. But one, uh, that I'd like to speak to you is, is Jill Kelly, who was instrumental in putting together our, uh, comprehensive plan, consolidated plan. And I'd just like Jill to explain to you what that is and why it needs to be, uh, why, why we needed to do this and what it all means. Oh, Jill's not here. Jill was supposed to be here to look. We attach this to your, um, to your packet, um, so, so that you had a change. It's 20-something pages, so I didn't want to, 36 pages, I didn't want to print it out. Uh, but essentially for being, uh, a title school under ESSA, every student succeeds act, we have to have a com- comprehensive plan that basically says, this is the demographics of our school, this is how many kids we have in each demographic area, this is how we have programming to help them, uh, and it's all spelt out. It gets submitted to the DOE and they have an approval process. Usually they'll come back and say, can you refine some of these numbers, uh, check this, check that? And then ultimately it sits on the books as, uh, as our, as our comprehensive plan. Uh, it's not something that you, you need to approve as a board, but Jill just needed you to understand that, uh, we had to do this, uh, under ESSA.
Sure.
Yep.
Can I just add that? So, um, as part of the Title I, Title II funds and all the other grant monies, they all have to be based on data that is collected through the comprehensive needs assessment. So when we create our goals, they have to be based on the findings through the comprehensive needs assessment. So that's the purpose of it, so that we can drive all our, our funding based on that.
It has our STAR literacy data and it has even our student discipline data, um, it has all of the data points that we need to provide as evidence.
How often does this have to be updated?
Too often.
Yeah. I feel like the last one was maybe three or four years ago.
Yeah, I, I think the last one, I remember it was four years ago. Might have been three, but I, I think it's four. It's, it's, it's a big job for Jill to curate all that information, uh, but it really helps us determine our goals moving forward and our vision and what, what things we need to focus on. So as much as it's a nuisance, it's definitely useful information.
The other administrator that I'd like to speak to, uh, is, is Peter Sosev. We've had some projects that have, uh, been going on this past month. It's been a busy, busy area here, especially around this school. So a couple of things that I'd like you to highlight on is our sewer project, um, and a roof here as he just, Peter's here.
So I, I'm hoping that everything is, um, understands pretty clearly and the package that I sent out, the couple pages that I sent out to you, it's all detailed pretty well explained in there. Uh, it's been a busy, busy, uh, few weeks, last few weeks, month, in order to try to wrap all of these projects up. We were fortunate and unfortunate to be able to, had a roof inspection, uh, of the high school gym at the same time that the winds were blowing big to the end, as you've seen some of those winds come in and you'd actually see our roof was, was floating and it was separating from the rubber matting that was down. And during that ins- inspection, um, it was determined that if we, obviously wouldn't fix that, that we were going to be having a leaky roof in our gym relatively quick. We were again also fortunate to continue to have the, uh, the inspections that we do on. We were again also fortunate to continue to have the, uh, the inspections that we do on an annual basis from Powell's, uh, Roofing Company. And in doing so, it allowed us to be able to, uh, show to the, prove to our insurance company that we have been doing due diligence to our roofs, taking care of them, seeing the obvious repairs that have been done, and also the maintenance that we've continued to do to our roofs. Having done that, the insurance company was able to come forward and to be able to grant us, um, almost all of the monies that we actually needed to complete, to complete roof, not necessarily just a portion of it, because they knew that there was some delamination throughout. We walked on the roof and all of the circles that you may see in white in some of those areas that you see on the screen are areas where the roof has been delaminated and, and some of the screws that were holding it down into the fall. Working with Paul from Powell's Roofing, we were able to, uh, determine that the insulation was still good, that was below, had not leaked to a point where it was going to be bad. Changed the rubber matting and also changed the first layer of underlayment. And we were able to do, uh, all of the roof for under $5,000 on our taxpayers' money. So that was a humongous, humongous project undertaking that was very timely to be able to do this. The insurance adjuster came in a couple of times and the first time that he came in, uh, we spent a little bit of time up on the roof. And I told him, I said, well, I said, I'm sorry to tell you that it's your choice. Either we fix the roof now or you pay for the floor later, because eventually the hardwood floor needs to get wet and that'll be yours. And I just made you aware. So the sooner you get this process, the sooner it's going to go. It didn't take very long that they basically came through and said that we were going to have the funds available to repair it. So that was a, that was a good project and a lot of times being able to make sure that came together. The sewer project had been being worked on, I think you folks are aware of the fact that we had, um, had to do it.
Did you say how old?
18 years old. 18 years old. There's been a lot of patching on that roof. There's places where there was three and four layers of rubber that was sealing up some of the seams and, uh, so it's, we're very fortunate, very, very fortunate to have been able to get the services that we were able to to get that fixed. The sewer line, you folks remember that we had to sign adhesment with the town authority in order to get that grant funding put together. There was an allocation of monies that was, uh, set for that as well. We were able to, uh, to complete the sewer line project, uh, even with the weather that we had, uh, in a timely fashion. Uh, we ended up finding a bad section of pipe that was right alongside the Heritage Trail on the Fort Penelope school side, where there had been some previous digging that had gone on at some point in time to try to drain some of the water and they hit the pipe. And that had made quite a little bit of a mess in that area. We were able to, uh, replace that section of pipe and replace, uh, all of the manholes that were creating an issue where we were getting the surface water into the sewage system. And, uh, the project also finished off by having all of the groundwork done, sealed. And our hope is that, uh, we don't see anything different at the top of the, the top anywhere as we're settled, because I think that Southernburg did an excellent job on the project in a very timely fashion. And, uh, so they did, they did very well. We were able to complete that. They worked a lot around our, our soccer season. Uh, they stayed away from areas where we were having a court so that we weren't going to have large holes around our soccer field. And so they, they were very flexible with us. We, but again, that takes a considerable amount of time and effort to try to make sure that that knee together. So those were the two, uh, big projects that were going on, along with the many other continuous projects that happened. So you've had an opportunity, I hope, to take a look at the, uh, the two and a half, three pages. And, um, you know, if there's any questions on that, please don't hesitate. I'd like to be able to help you to understand what we've done in the last few days to try to make sure that our schools are safe and that our students and staff are, are working in the best possible environment, the best learning environment that we possibly can provide.
That sewer project, there was a grant for it, because VP was making us do it to the town. And then we got, did, did it come in under bid, about bid, or, or our budget anyway?
Yeah, it, 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 one of the estimates was around $300,000, but if the bid come in, I believe it was a hundred and forty-seven thousand, and the grant is $90,000.
And so I haven't seen the actual last, last bid. I was understood, it was understood to be in the last buildings. My understanding was that they were going to be right in, right on track with what they had proposed. So that's where we, that's where we are.
Uh, we have two policies, first read.
Giselle, you had a policy meeting. Did anything new come up during that policy meeting on these two policies or?
Not on these two policies.
Okay.
Except actually Jake mentioned, um, the need to tell parents or to allow the public, let me find my notes real quick here. To ensure that parents are aware and are offered the opportunity to participate in meetings and conferences using Zoom or other media. So we can work on that on another policy.
Perfect. The ones you have in front of you, KFB and KFBA are needed as part of Jill's, uh, submission of that comprehensive needs assessment. They're the Title I, um, policies. KFB is, is the parent involvement. And there's just some, some slight language that, uh, needs to be adjusted. You can see the word jointly is changed in cooperation. Disadvantaged is changed to academically at risk. And then, um, on the second page, you have mention of notifying families. We've added, um, PTO, pre-K and shipping. So very, very minimal changes to that policy. That was last updated, uh, in 2004. The second one is, uh, our policy for, um, the schools and involvement with parents. And you could see that obviously we, we had to strike some of the schools that are no longer part of the district. And, um, some slight language change with that as well. So very, very minimal changes. This is just first read, but if you notice anything that.
Jill needs this by when?
She, we're, we're, we're good.
Okay. As long as she didn't need it when you say.
We, we submitted, we submitted the changed one, but it does not have an approval date. But we already submitted these.
Yep.
Potentially changed.
Moving on to items of business.
Just a rolling agenda item in any discussions with Valley Unified. We can have it this time. It's just an open forum for, um, for your discussion or if you need anything from me specific to Valley Unified.
Anyone have anything?
Well, we, we're going to have to discuss it sooner or later. At some point in time, we need to discuss that we do not approve of the site, right? But at some point in time, that's not going to change. So what do we need as a board to move forward? That's my question. I mean, we're kind of ignoring this is what I'm saying. But somebody's ignoring. But I'm just saying is that we will not, we voted not to accept the site. According to the four things that the commissioner wants, we need to agree on that site. That's my point.
I think you're right.
One of the things that I proposed to the think tank was should we move forward with mediation? And Toby brought up the concern that, um, you know, this board's letter to the other two boards wasn't necessarily, uh, intended to enact the dispute resolution process. So, so I don't know if, I don't know if you want me to try to move forward with organizing mediation. I can tell you that the other two districts will probably say yes, please do that. But we, we would need your participation as well. So I, I don't know what this board, where this board stands with that.
Well, I think we'd have to first decide if we do want to file a grievance. I mean, that's the initial step is the grievance, of which we have not filed.
I agree with you. I don't see any point. Do you? I mean, I don't see any point in filing a formal grievance. As I understand it, we had our think tank. It just kind of sat there. We, I forgot to bring my notes, you know, one day. I mean, we, we kind of agreed in theory on a bunch of stuff, but we didn't really put. We agreed in theory on a lot of things, but we didn't agree in practice in hard agreement on anything. And there were, as I charted it out, I mean, there were, there were really only three things. But when you broke it down into its composite pieces, I ended up with a chart that was, I want to say it was six or eight things on this column, and then the three districts across the top. And I checked off when we had agreement from all, when we agreed with the proposal, I put proposal one, proposal two, proposal three, and I had eight proposals. And then I went across and not a one of them did everybody have a hard yeah or a hard no. Everything was kind of, well, me.
I think it's because one is contingent upon the other.
Well, and I think too, like, some of the stuff was very soft. I mean, like, you know, this district has talked about how we'd really like to get the outlined schools involved, but what does that look like exactly? And I think in theory, everybody's cool with that. The outlined communities, like the, the tuitioning communities, I think everyone's kind of cool with the idea of it. I think we all agree with the idea of it. But if we ask to have them added tomorrow as voting members, I think I don't, I think that would be enough. It just feels like, and, and the thing is, is that's, I mean, we've got two things we're talking about. Talking about the Educational Service Center, which is one thing. And then we're talking about the RSU formation, which are two separate issues. I don't know. I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know where, where we are with this. I know our district was pretty clear. I think Sarah and I were pretty clear in the think tank meeting what needed to happen. It, it's, this is something we talked about in executive session last time when we were talking to Dan. And I don't, I don't think, there's anything wrong with saying it now. It's weird to be in this position where we're being told that we need to change our mind by our employees when the other two parties can change their mind as well. We're being asked to move, they can move too. If they want to do mediation, if they want to ask for mediation, hell, ask for mediation. We're not the only ones that dance, right? I mean, it doesn't have to be mediation under the auspices of a, uh, of a formal request. I mean, if they want to mediate, hell, yeah, ask to mediate. I mean, I, I don't. I guess I don't, I don't know if a formal complaint gets us anything. It just gets us more of the same. Unless, I don't know. I mean, Ben, we've got this 31st deadline, right?
You do. Did we ever receive a letter from the commissioner stating, uh, the four things and the deadline is actually the 31st?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're basically in paths primarily on site selection. They say absolutely no on it, and we say absolutely no. Do we want to change that position? Our position as a board?
Well, we, we had a, uh, we had a vote a number of times.
Right, but I'm saying at this point, do we have any interest in changing our position on site selection?
You want to ask each one of us individually? No?
I think if there's a motion to change our position, I get a motion to change our position. At this point, I don't.
No, it's just open discussion. And I don't think, I don't think anyone here has any desire to do so, but I wanted to give everyone an opportunity to speak up if they did.
And I guess from my perspective, like, that's just, even if we, even if we address that issue, we would still have other issues that we've not resolved that are getting short-tripped because they're not as interesting. And also because I think they're less divisive and they, they rest less. Uh, more, I mean, the other issues. I think the other issues are more compelling and they tend to get short-tripped than the. The representation issue is a huge issue. We have a little over 50%, right? It's a shade. I mean, we looked at a proposal that would give us five votes, but at the request of the other two communities, we needed to make sure that we had certain communities represented at a certain amount within our five votes. And I don't understand when we decided to let the other communities decide how we do our business. And that's troubling to me. I mean, we talked about the, the, you know. I, I just don't understand. I mean, we were just, I, I talked to Jake briefly about this because we're going to come a time where we're going to, we've lost our Walla Grass slash Fort Kent representative. I mean, maybe we need to look at merging Walla Grass and New Canada, have them share representative and, and have Fort Kent get that spare. Because Jake's representing like 300 people from New Canada and 500 people from Fort Kent. And I think Walla Grass is the inverse, but together they'd probably come together with representative. But it's, I think the issue is, you know, there, there were contingencies on us having five votes, which is our proportionate share, um, that we have a certain portion of them from certain communities. And it's like, we don't, I don't care if everybody since 33 comes from Frenchville or Santa Cruz, that's their business. It's not our business.
No, it's the same with our board. This is our board. We'll decide who represents what. When we formed or when we made decisions on who was going to be on the Valley Unified Board, everyone was given an opportunity. We purposely asked the outlined communities, the only one that volunteered to do it that was interested in it was Jake. So the amount of, the amount of discussion that the other two boards have had on our board composition and the Valley Unified, Valley Unified Board composition from 27 is troubling. They're trying to control every little thing, right down to our boards.
So it, I mean, I guess that's what I'm saying is that looking at all of this, I understand that the site selection issue is divisive. But even if we set that aside, we still don't have a agreement. Even if we put that hot button issue aside, we're still not aligning. We're almost aligning in places, but I suspect if it made a difference, we wouldn't align anymore. You know, I mean, because as it stands, the proposal was a five-five, we'd have five people, they'd have five people, between the two, we'd be two and three or something like that. And then it was a tie, we'd just not move. And that's fine, but we'd be stagnant because I think it would be. I, I don't know how it resolves. I really don't. I mean, even if this project fails, we're still, we're still stuck with each other for a while. And I, I don't know what to do about it.
I think if you look at each of the items, right, the ILA, site selection, even the tuitioning, even the RSU 7 to 12, each of them has their own issues. That's not just, you know, tuitioning. The idea of bringing a tuitioning community in is because we take a loss at Set 27 when they tuition in. So they would be paying more of their share to be, you know, their, their proportional share to be involved, but to only offer them at the RSU when they're just paying a bigger portion, but not having any say in anything. I don't know, buy with them, that doesn't sound like a great deal. I don't know why I'd want to do that. So that kind of makes that move point. You know, the, um, the RSU for a, for a 7 to 12, it's not even a legally existing entity at this point. It's just not. And that, and, and there's no crystal ball, there's no assurance that it's going to exist. There's no assurance that it's going to exist in a way that we want it to exist.
I, I believe that at some point in time, we need to know exactly what our options are if we don't agree to any of these four, any of the four requests that basically the commissioner gave us till the 31st. If we don't agree to that, we need to have a plan on what we're going to do. We need to have a plan on what we're going to do. And we already do not have the trust that we had when we started. I don't think we're ever going to get the trust. I mean, there's only so much fire you can take. You know, we've been nice to everybody up to this point, and we're going to continue, but we have not been treated fair and we have not been represented fairly. And that's why I think we need a plan to move forward in a direction that, well, you need to move forward. And basically, we said no to the site selection months ago. We need a plan if that doesn't go. We need a plan. We can't just wait. We need somebody that's going to point us in that direction and tell us what we're going to do, you know, and what the consequences are, because there's going to be consequences. We just need to know how expensive they're going to be.
When you were at the think tank, did they ask why we wanted the site selection piece to be discussed?
The video was up, it was, it was a good discussion we had, I thought. I, we, yeah, I mean, we hit the, we hit the points, we talked about the issues. So they're all, they're all from Channel 4, that won't labor the point, but I think, I mean, by the time we were done talking, I think we were heard. I'll say that. I think I felt more heard at the end of our discussion there than I had in a while. I don't know, was I hallucinating there?
No, I think, I think you're right. I think, I think I started out the conversation and I tried to be logical and reasonable and we came back with, so it's politics. And I was kind of like, oh, no. And then Toby kind of started from the beginning, gave him a rundown of what, where we've been throughout this, like, this process, and a pretty good summary, I think, of how we've gotten to where we're at and why we feel this way. I think, I think we were heard, I felt heard. I think there was nodding.
So it took six months, seven months to get to that point?
Well, I think, I think we are all, I mean, it's easy as people to dig in to a narrative, and we're all guilty. I mean, I do it, and I got my own ideas. And I, you know, I, I think the entire problem in some respects has been oversimplified, and that didn't help anything. It's not simple. It's complicated. A lot of moving parts. And to simplify it and reduce it down to a letter to the editor is missing the point. I mean, we've been in this, Christ, how long? Hundred years? We've been dealing with this? And for me, I mean, what makes me sad is we could have spent time doing actual, like...
School board stuff?
Yeah. Feels like time wasted. But I don't know, I felt like, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to beat them up. I felt like in that meeting, they heard what we were saying, and I watched the affect change on some of those people, like, they, it sunk in, they understood what I was saying. I wasn't just being like, it wasn't just political jerkiness, like, I wasn't just being a horrible human being. You know, it's easy to paint me as a monster, because I'm not always careful with my words. But I was careful that night. I used the right words. And, and I noticed the change in the way people were looking at me, and that felt better.
So they understood that SAD 27 was a 50% split, and that was, we need to talk about that, right? They were open to that discussion?
I think, I think, no. No, I don't, I don't think that's still registering, but I think they're at least willing to listen. I don't know if they'll agree, but they'll listen, and that's, that's an improvement.
And that's an improvement.
That's an improvement. I think it's a different, we all have different needs. I mean, the governor, the commissioner herself said in the meeting on the 25th that, you know, maybe this three district merger thing is a, is a bad model. Commissioner said that. Like, maybe, maybe these individual communities need to retain their identity, maybe forcing them together is a bad idea across the board, because a policy issue, not just for us, but for other, because other schools have tried this in failed. I mean, you know, maybe she's right. I mean, she's smarter than I am, she's the commissioner.
She'd still want to come up and visit us?
Who is that going to do?
Yeah, I don't know if that's going to do any good. I mean, I don't know. Keith, any thoughts?
Well, I mean, I've been following some of the meetings they've had with the school construction committee and Board of Education, and the tone in Augusta seems like they're ready to move on, to send this money elsewhere at this point if we don't show any forward momentum by December 31st. I don't get the feeling, Toby, that you walked away from that think tank meeting with the feeling that they were going to go back to their boards and have constructive conversations about, hey, no, this is where SAD 27 is coming from? Maybe...
Well, I mean, hope springs eternal, right? I mean, there's nothing, it doesn't cost me anything to think they're going to go have that conversation. So I'm going to hope that it happens.
Sure.
I mean, they're not bad people. They're not my enemy. They're just, they have a different perspective and we disagree on something that's important. And we have, we have things in our category that are helping us, and it doesn't hobble us. I mean, I think, I think they have needs we don't have in some respects, and we have needs they don't have. And they don't always line up. I mean, you don't have to hate the people you disagree with, you just have to disagree with them. I refuse to hate those people. Unlike the people on Facebook who come to me. So, yeah.
And when's the next Valley Unified Board meeting?
November 23.
November 23. Thanksgiving week, isn't it?
Are we going to need to, should we get somebody else?
I don't know. That's a discussion for another time.
What I was going to propose, if, if, I don't feel like I'm qualified to try to get the three boards to negotiate, and it's just not my skill set, and it's not a fair position to be in anyway. So if the natural next step is mediation, and Toby did suggest that maybe the other two SEUs, maybe they, they, they propose that we mediate, maybe that's the natural next step, and maybe the next Valley Unified meeting would be scheduled around a mediation of that board. That's what I'm thinking. You know, I think once, once you sit in a, in a context where this is important to us, this is important to us, and then you can have that mediated to have, have some kind of agreement, I can't get you there. You know, I can sit here and tell you that if you were open to look at site selection as being what it is, I can, I can, I can guarantee, but I think that your position on everything else will be more palatable to the, to the other SEUs. Again, that's just based on my general understanding of where everyone sits.
I think the thing that bothers me that came in that letter from the union is that they implied that we were asking for a perfect and a perfect process that would make everybody happy. And I don't, I don't think that's what we were asking for. I think we were just expecting transparent and unbiased. I don't, I don't think that's what we got.
What was that, Sarah?
The, the letter from the three teachers' unions that basically touched upon site selection, and they felt that we were maybe upset because, you know, that we shouldn't expect a site selection process that was perfect and that would make everybody happy. And I don't think that's what we were expecting, that a perfect process that would make everybody happy. I think a transparent one that was unbiased, which is what, you know, we'd have been told it would be. I don't know that that was necessarily what we got.
I agree with that statement. And I think working with the other three districts is, this is a firmament, a foundation that we want to build greater things on, and it doesn't seem very firm and a good place to start with how the site selection process panned out, unfortunately.
Even that letter is somewhat disturbing and misleading because several of us have heard from many teachers that they knew nothing of the letter, or they don't agree with that letter one bit. But it's been joined together as three districts, making it sound much different than what it may really be in 27. I'd rather hear, hear directly from the teachers in 27, or what they think, the teachers, administrators, whoever. It's good to hear the information from all three, but I'd like to hear from our own two, just like on the shortened school day or...
Calendar.
Change school week, potential changes to the school week to alleviate some of the stress and wear and tear. I'd like to hear just from SAD 27. We're managing SAD 27, not 33 in Madawaska. And from what I understand on that, that what our teachers wanted isn't necessarily what came forward in that part, or what, right?
I understand that, yeah.
Mr. Clapp is here, if you would like to ask.
Well, no, I think it was just, it was a new issue, the question was, I mean, it's not really a question, it was rhetorical. It was, that was, that before deciding which possibility to take prior to the meeting you had with the Barry Keith and I, how the other two districts were consulted in determining what the best plan of action would be.
And, I'm not sure I...
On the, on the, on the extra time, the first time we did the extra time...
Right, the extra time of teachers.
Yeah. The first round of that was in consultation with the two other district unions, correct?
Correct. There was a meeting with...
That, that was the question.
I guess my concern is, I want information from 27 to make decisions for 27 and not from 33 in Madawaska, because what our teachers deal with here is not necessarily the same as what they deal with in 33 in Madawaska.
Well, likewise, I don't think they'd want us making the decisions for them either.
No, I mean, that's clear with the RSU issue of, do we want a full-on RSU? Do we want 7 to 12? I mean, it's that same, it's the same thing.
I can assure you, whenever staff are surveyed, it's always collected separately by SAD. Oftentimes, it's called a Valley Unified Survey, but we collect data from 27 alone, 33 alone, and Madawaska alone.
I understand that, but the reporting, I think would be more beneficial if it was just from 27 to the 27th board. Oh, stipend positions. Apparently we have stipend positions in Valley Unified, but we haven't heard anything else.
We have one Valley Unified state.
So what do we want to do about Valley Unified? I feel like we haven't really answered anything.
Well, I, I think if, I mean...
All right, what do we want to go in that board meeting on the 23rd? What's going to happen there?
Well, I, I think Ben just said that if they want to, like, if we want to do some sort of formal mediation, if they want to ask for that, I mean, I, I don't think I could in good faith say no, right? I mean, I'm always willing to listen. Might not change my mind, but I'm willing to listen.
Right, I was going to say, that doesn't necessarily change that we want what we want.
No, but sometimes somebody who's really skilled at what they do can, can help find places or people to meet.
So do we want that meeting to be that venue, is to do some mediation, or is that something separate?
I, I'm not, I mean...
And this is out of my, you know, I'm, I'm not sure how to do this correctly either, so...
I don't think it's the right way to do it.
Okay.
Ben, can I ask? Yeah. So I, I just need some clarification. First and foremost, I just want to say, I have big decisions to make, and I kind of don't, I feel like, either way, I feel like it's a lose-lose situation for the board currently, because, anyway, that's kind of how I feel about it. But I'm kind of curious as to what your take is on, why wouldn't you want to put your best foot forward and your best effort to try to resolve instead of just saying nay right away? And I'm not saying you guys are saying that right now, but because at the end of the day, the goal of this school is for these students, and we can't lose sight of that. And so the responsibility that you have right now is huge. So why would you not proceed with, with mediation and then let the voters decide when it comes time to? Because there are multiple steps that are still set in place for this to continue. I'm just fearful that we're going, you know, a small group of people are going to make a decision that will weigh on your shoulders for a really long period of time, and I wouldn't want that responsibility. I would rather deflect that to the voters and the community and see what could be mediated as opposed to having that, because I would have a hard time with whatever decision. I would rather leave it to the voters to make that choice. But I'm just saying, I'm curious, is that anything that you have considered, or is it like a done deal, December 31st, we're not going to sway, that's just what it's going to be?
Well, I think it's very stated before, Sharon, that the voters did vote and the site failed with 27. It was not a passing vote.
It was 50/50.
You need to understand something, Sharon. Before the meeting, there was a sales pitch. Not everybody that wanted to vote were able to vote, and it was unbelievable. Why 50/50 is beyond me. I mean, it should have been, it should have been more the other way, but I'm just saying is that 50/50 is a no vote. And there was a sales pitch to promote this before, and it should have been just a vote. That's my point. Well, and also the wording prior to the vote was different here within SAD 27 than what it was in the other districts. So we also have to keep that in mind, among other things.
But, you know, I have to say that people were recruited into a school that I had never seen what put in this school, ever. I mean, that had never, I, I believe that they were recruited to come and vote. So you can look at it multiple ways. You can look at young families weren't able to come and vote that night as well. And so you can say a 50/50 vote is a no vote. I look at a 50/50 vote as a 50/50 vote. It could be one or the other. We haven't seen the concept design, we haven't gone through the whole process. So why do we let this unfold and work through and compromise and learn how to work together? Because at the end of the day, this is a school to improve the condition of the valley and our students' experiences. And I just feel my heart breaks for you guys because you're really in a very hard situation. I understand that. But it's not about us, and it's not about, you know, it's about the future of this valley and what we have to offer. And it's great opportunities for our students. I work in three schools, and the people there are amazing, and the students there are great, and I want to give them opportunities. And so I'm just so fearful that we're going to stop this process because we didn't get our way. And I understand where you're coming from, but I just think we need to look and keep focused on what the goal is. I'm afraid of Walla Grass.
I'd like to just ask you a question. Would you ever go to Madawaska and Frenchville and ask them the same thing you just asked us? For them to change their mind? Because you're asking us to abandon our position in, in...
You made a decision.
No, but, but listen, 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 listen. You're asking us to abandon our position because that's what compromise is, is us abandoning our position. We compromised plenty, we abandoned our position all the way down there. What I'm asking you, can you go to their board meetings and look at them and say, what about the children? Like what you just said? And ask them to change their position? Are you willing to do that? And if not, why not?
Why? Because I... Because I think we've gone through the process. Why would we want to go back?
But if it's so important that we get it done and the only thing we need to do is to get it done for the children?
So is this...
Then ask them to move too.
So is this, let me ask you, is this a strategy to kind of push them to the point where we're on the brink and they're going to fold and say, okay, we changed our mind?
This isn't a strategy. You're giving me too much credit, I don't want a strategy. But I think, I mean...
I don't think they have any intention of folding.
No.
Of moving.
No.
Tom Kent came into Valley Unified, a board member came into a site selection meeting, maybe our third one, and said, told the site selection, need to stop wasting your time, Madawaska will never come to Fort Kent. And here we are, almost a year and a half later. Has it been a while?
Well, the sad part, I think, and I don't want to get into a tit-for-tat kind of thing, but the sad part, it was agreed upon and I think there were some regrets after, and understandably, and I'm not, you know, I would say Toby, no, I would not do that right now because I feel as though the onus is on MSAD 27 because they agreed to it in the first place.
Well...
Well, okay, I changed my mind, you know, type of thing.
I have a point that I'd like to make. And my point is that the site selection committee asks that we slow this down, delay, take a good look at this and see we're doing the right thing. Vote with six to three, no, we're not slowing it down. That's why, we can only get burnt so many times.
I think Sharon, there was, I can, last week, I probably spent thirty hours of my life on school board stuff, thinking, talking to people, trying to get, make an educated decision. When I've talked to somebody who hasn't been following things and talk them through what I have lived through all of my days, the last year and a half or whatever it's been, without fail, they go, wow, yep, I see, I am in line with your thinking. That is why I struggle to want to continue it. We're, we've been elected to make decisions and we've all been living it. We're the ones who have known intimately what is going on, decisions that were made, conversations that have been had, emails, requests, whatever. We know this stuff. We know a lot of stuff.
Oh, and I don't doubt that, and I know that you guys have had a year from the campaign, so I don't dismiss that whatsoever, but the backlash is going to stop either way.
An ultimate option, and Toby's right, I mean, maybe if they want to do mediation, maybe somebody can come up with alternative options that we would consider right now. We are told, this is the problem, this is the only way forward. I am kind of tired of that way of thinking. I am of the belief that if you have a problem, there's probably thirty ways to solve it, you pick kind of the best way you know how with what information you have, and then you pick to move forward as opposed to saying this is the only way forward.
You know, Sharon and all of you who want to move forward with this project is we have two more phases. Peter, correct me if I'm wrong. So we'd have another concept phase, another referendum, and then afterwards, we have an additional referendum for the final say, correct, Peter?
You'd have a concept design phase, and then you'd have a public hearing, a straw bone of the concept of the site, and then you have the referendum.
The referendum, right. Timeframe for that, roughly, a year?
I'm trying to remember what we were looking at.
Roughly, you can be well-parted.
Depends how quickly the concept design moves. It depends on, yeah, how quickly the concept design can move and how quickly we can get the information out there and schedule the hearings, but I would say you're looking at between six to eight months.
Okay, so six to eight months, it fails. So we just spent six to eight months doing something that has the potential of failing because of how SAD's thoughts were.
Well, and right now, we're not just at a standstill because of how we feel and what we're doing, we're also at a standstill because the RSU, the Board of Education has told us, we need to get our governance affairs in order, which is something that some of us knew possibly prior to the Educational Service Center being created, that an educational service center could never govern a new school.
And we were told otherwise with the previous administration, unfortunately, but that changed this new school.
Well, you know, I have correspondence that says, we've known about the RSU for a while now. Aside from that, pre-K to 12 RSU is something that's in statute and we can work on immediately if we so decide. Grade seven to 12 RSU couldn't even get written into law maybe until next May, June at the earliest, so I'm told by one of our legislators. I'm also told that unless some of these tuitioning communities are allowed to become part of this RSU, one of our legislators will not support sponsoring such a bill. So we need to take all of this into consideration. We know we can't move forward with site concept and design until we take care of our governance house. We need to get this in order. Now, unless this board can decide whether we want to move forward with creating this RSU, this is a done deal. We're done. So either we take a vote or stance on creating a pre-K to 12 RSU with our neighbors and tell them, this is where we stand. We'll only continue this if we want to do a pre-K to 12 Valley-wide RSU. Either we agree on that or we tell them, we're willing to help form the seven to twelve RSU, contact our legislators, invite outlying tuitioning communities into this RSU. Now, we've got to make a decision one way or the other. What do we want to do here? Because if we can't move forward with an RSU and tell the DOE by December 31st that we actually want to do this RSU, then this is a done deal. We're done.
Well, you could start at the next meeting by asking either Frenchville, Santa Gata, or Madawaska, let's see if they would be willing to change the site selection. We don't agree on that. As long as we don't agree on that, it's done. I mean, it's, it's a done deal. It's, ask Madawaska if they want to have a school in Fort Kent. Ask Frenchville if they want a Fort Kent. Ask us if we want it in Frenchville. We already said no. Ask if we want it in Madawaska, maybe we'll say no.
I feel like as a student, it goes far more than just like what we like. Obviously, there's money and a lot of other things involved. And I really want the new school, but it makes me question because it's like, we have the ski tow right here, we have the Fort Kent Outdoor Center. I mean, it's like, you can go pick up McDonald's, or like, just the things I think of doing after school, I can't think of what people do in St. Agatha. Just like right after school, you know what I mean? Kids walk to the ski tow after school to go ski. Like, you're taking that away from them. Now, it's like buses have to take them home or parents have to call and try to get bused to the ski tow, or like those sort of activities, you know what I mean? Like, and you're talking about like sports practices, it's like our sports teams, like even on the ski team, people come to Fort Kent to train with the Fort Kent Ski Team, for example, from around the valley. So when you think about that idea of it, it's like students, I think, would rather be in school in Fort Kent. Just for me personally, I want the school. And, you know, I think either way, like teenagers are fairly flexible that we can work things out, but if you're asking activity-wise, it's like, I can't think of a single reason I'd be in St. Agatha compared to here. Of course, I'm from here, so there's a bias in that sense, but there's also Madawaska. I don't really go to Madawaska for anything, but like, you know, maybe you go to Marden's, but it's like physical activities, it's like you come here, like people come here from the valley more than people go to Madawaska in that sense.
The stipend position, what?
Do you want to tell me, Sharon? The Valley Unified stipend position?
Oh, which stipend?
For the Empower Learning Program.
Oh, I thought it was another stipend position.
I may do it up.
Well, no, I didn't know. I just assumed that that was allowed, that we had the stipend position. So with the Empower Learning Management System, every single content area, every single standard needs to be developed and created and downloaded, and so I have done that, but we've also realized that through, especially through the English Language Arts, that we had clustered all of the standards. So it required us to separate the standards by grade level, which I did the high school, which is extremely time-consuming. So with all of the COVID and all the other stuff, I just don't have the time to dedicate to that. So there, can I say the name of the individual?
Yes.
So Leslie Markey, who's had experience with the program itself, has offered to help in the stipend position for that, where she is separating the standards by grade level. She's done the middle school standards for ELA and we're moving down into upper elementary and lower elementary. And so I think for the first, it took her like about a week to do that. It's quite labor-intensive. And then the next goal is to take all of the scoring guides and downloading them into a scoring rubric that will be into an Excel program, and the goal of that is to connect it into Google Classroom so that the teachers, when they're grading, will be able to upload the rubric that we use as depth of knowledge in case something would happen with Empower. What we predict with Google Classroom is that there will be a merge at hopefully sometime Empower School, so all of that data will be in there. We're looking at, if I were to say, maybe five hundred rubrics that would need to be converted, so again, that's just really very labor-intensive. She's going to be working on that when she finishes the ELA, so it's to help me out, it's not a full-time for next year, it's just this year, that's where we're at with
So are you unaware of this? Are you part of Valley Unified?
I heard about it through the public, who was concerned that, you know, we formed Valley Unified to save money, and we keep adding positions as far as I'm concerned, because I hadn't heard about it.
But how, how do you hire somebody through Valley Unified without going through the board?
It hasn't ended up on the Valley Unified Board agenda yet.
Okay, and how long has she been doing this?
We started this fall.
She did, she just started in November, well, excuse me, not November, October. She worked when we adjourned.
So is she entering in data or updating this rubrics for all three school districts?
Well, we share one. We share one. So either, if we were by ourselves, it would also need to occur. And it couldn't be anyone, it needs to be someone with an education background simply because there's times when she has to create some of the taxonomy and the furbage that matches appropriately. So it's not just a matter of data entry, it's someone who is knowledgeable with taxonomy and, you know, furbage, educational furbage.
Anything else on Valley Unified? Questions, comments?
Why the 31st of December, man?
Why the 31st of December?
For the deadline.
Giselle and I received your letter and you asked me, or chairman, but, yeah, I sent it to the commissioner. The commissioner's reply to that letter that you sent was, in a second. Dear Ben, we recognize how much work you and the other SADs put into this effort and we're very sorry to hear that a governance structure could not be developed for Valley Unified School Construction Project. So I replied to that because we were concerned that it sounded like the governor, the commissioner was saying, well, the project doesn't look like it's happening. I replied that we're optimistic that we can resolve this, and she never replied. So two days later, Giselle and I went to go see the commissioner so that we could have a discussion around that. I too listened to the state board, state, so school construction meeting where the commissioner was on the phone with the school construction and I'm afraid, and I have reached out to the commissioner to see if she'll clarify some of the things. There were some statements made by the commissioner that were not, in my view, and I'm not going to speak for Giselle, but in my view, that were not accurate. One thing that she commented in that reporting was, I would point out that we were very willing, I said we would go up there and meet with them, but they preferred to come down. We had made multiple requests, which I shared with all of you in multiple board meetings, going back to June, where we requested the, on June 19th, we requested that the commissioner come up here. Her secretary confirmed that the week of August 17 or 24 would work. We replied with six dates that would work for us, but I heard nothing back. On July 2, I wrote back to check in. Georgette said she would check with the commissioner. I received no reply. Then again, on July 14, I checked with her again and received no reply. So we made multiple attempts to get the commissioner up here. So I felt that her making that statement to the construction committee was not fair and not accurate because we had tried to get her up here. When we arrived, Giselle and I, the commissioner did say, when she greeted us, oh, I've been meaning to go up there, but we felt that this was urgent based on her email sounding like the project was over. As the conversation ensued after that, it was clear to Giselle and I that in the DOE's eyes, this project was done. Scott Brown made reference to a timeline that was never set in stone. The timeline we had was, as long as this project is moving forward, we're going to continue with it. And your letter signified that there was no longer forward progress. So we asked the commissioner how we could have more time to resolve these issues because, as Sharon stated a while ago, this project, the work we have done in this project, I have dumped five years of my life into this project, as some of you have, to see it all go away because of what's happening now, just, I can't bear it. So we asked her, if we could have more time, and it was suggested that a timeline be established so that we now have an established timeline set in play. And we came to a consensus together that December 31st, the end of the school year, was the end of the calendar year made sense because the commissioner told us she has plans to reallocate that money in different places. Another statement that the commissioner made in that phone call that was not correct, they thought that the most helpful thing to them to get things moving, because they have had over a year now to come to some court of agreement with the RSU, would be a deadline again. We did not suggest that a timeline would be helpful to resolve this. We suggested a timeline, or we agreed to a timeline, to help save and get us more time because it was apparent that the DOE had said this thing is done. So, Giselle, unless you feel differently?
No, I'd like to state that that's exactly what happened. When we arrived, it was a dead project. Not only had we received that email saying, oh, I'm so sorry, it didn't work out, she started by stating that there are many schools that could benefit from the monies that were being held up. And you've listened to the tape, she said, the bond rates were good, the construction projects coming in were good, we were holding up money that could be used elsewhere. We both looked at each other and we thought, holy cow, this project is dead. We've been dealing with COVID for four or five months, focused on COVID. So we told her, we said, we've all been, including the State Department, focused on COVID. We moved forward as much as we could. We were actually pleading with her to allow us to continue. And like Ben said, this is five, six years of our lives with an opportunity like we've never seen in the St. John Valley. So we were awestruck that we might be like, whoa, this is the gate, it's done. So when someone said, well, what's the date? We were like, phew. But, you know, there was suggestion of this money could help many schools rehabilitate, there was suggestion of creating new grants, you heard that on the recording too, of maybe creating grants now with two schools instead of three. There were plans that we were told we were holding up. There were plans that we were told we were holding up. So we defended the project as best we could because in the back of my mind, at least, I'm not going to speak for Ben, the issue was RSU at the time. We had just received your letter the week before. The issue was on your letter, can we change the weighted voting, create an RSU and show uh one person, one person vote? And we felt we could do that. We felt we could convince and I'm talking out of, you know, I just felt like, yes, S A D thirty-three in Madawaska could probably live with that and then move on. Site was not any issue at that point. Anyway, yes, I agree with you, Ben.
And I'm not saying the commissioner misspoke to the school committee knowingly, but she doesn't understand how we have people dissecting every word that someone's saying when when in fact those words are taken out of context. So out of context, it sounds very differently than what it is. I I just handed out to you the email that I sent you and the other three board, the other two boards, the the day that we got back from Augusta. And and I and I just want to highlight, we asked the commissioner to allow us to have more time to attempt to resolve M S A D twenty-seven concerns and still have the opportunity to take advantage. I was upfront with you on that night, that that's exactly what we did. The commissioner was always all was also very direct in stating that the DOE recognizes this is prime time to construct schools and as the bids for construction are low and the percentage rates are are low as well. We were also um trying to be very transparent with you that the commissioner looked to reallocate that money elsewhere. So you ask why the thirty first, Toby? Because that's the date that was floated out there and supported by everyone in that One thing I can honestly say to all of you, and I will look at all of you directly in the eyes, I have never lied or never misled this board, never.
Well, I think clearly there's a communication issue with the Department of Education because when Toby, Sarah and I went down and met with her, all these things that we'd asked for during site selection, that we were told, no, that's not part of this, it can be done. And I'm not saying on Ben, I'm saying with the whole process. But all these things that we kept asking for, including additional site costs, whatever it may have been, we were told, no, no, that's not part of this step, this is the next step. We'll come to find out, we talked with her, we could have done anything we wanted to there. That was community decisions, localized decisions that could have been made on all of these things that we were told, no, this is Department of Education, that's how it has to be. No, it wasn't. So when you wonder why we're upset about site selection, that is why, because we've been misled through the entire process.
Completely lied.
We started the process with Madawaska saying, no way, no how are we going to Fort Kent? And now that we're taking a stance and we're defending ourselves, all of a sudden we're the bad guys. We're not going to do it. That is why site selection is off the table for us. We have bent as much as we're going to bend, we've listened to Paul Seer, bullied the entire site selection process, we're done with it. If they want to go back to the table and we'll look at the sites fairly, we'll wait them like they were supposed to wait them, we'll bring in all the other things, the sites that we asked to be revisited, that they were going to re-score, but let's not bring those back up. Why? Because one of them scored very high. So go ahead, Giselle.
I've heard it twice tonight and I I guess I have a question. When Paul Seer made the statement that...
It wasn't just Paul Seer.
Okay, whoever whoever made the statement, um we're going to, I think it had to do with giving up sites in Madawaska because um let's say, I'm I'm paraphrasing, okay? I'm not saying exactly, but wasn't it like, we know that Madawaska won't go to Fort Kent, we also know that Fort Kent won't come to Madawaska, so let's cut to the chase and look at the sites in the middle. Is that pretty much what it was?
He he said that and my response was like, don't speak for us.
And that's that's what?
And so what he came down to as his um suggestion was site three A, three B, one site to the east, one site to the west, and cut out all of all of the engineering that that goes into it, all of the matrix, all of all of the stuff.
I I agree with what you may have said, Sarah. I'm not saying that I disagree with one or of the other of you guys. I'm just saying there was another side to that, another side to that sentence. It wasn't just Madawaska will never go to Fort Kent.
No, there was two sentences. There was there was a Valley Unified board member who at the beginning of the meeting asked to speak before we even started and said that directed the site selection committee to stop wasting time and money and cut all the sites in in Fort Kent and Madawaska because it just won't work.
We actually, we were actually asked to take a vote, which we voted down.
Correct.
Remember? They wanted they wanted us to eliminate all Fort all and all Fort Kent and all Madawaska sites.
We voted down and we asked the, we asked the, because the fifty sites was done then.
Um well, I didn't want to argue that point. I just wanted to, there was more to the phrase and there might have been two or three people.
Well, and Tom Kent said in our Valley Unified meeting outright, this thing's not going in Fort Kent or Madawaska.
Oh.
I mean, it was as clean as that. I mean, you didn't, it wasn't, there was no like, there's no second clause there. I mean, we knew that from day one.
And I don't think, I don't think our board's issue with site selection is new. We had before the straw poll, we came up with a statement from our board that says, we do not agree with this, the proceeding and we do not agree with the site selection outcome. And we asked for it to be distributed before the straw poll. We, it was in that, in the letter on the August twenty-sixth, it keeps talking, I I keep hearing about this letter talks about the ILA. In that letter, we talked about we were not satisfied with site selection. People, I don't know, it wasn't bold based? I don't know. It it since February, before this this straw poll, our board has taken a position against this site. This is not a new thing.
Part of the reason why I think you hear the commissioner talking in that school construction meeting about these types of projects being very difficult, especially, you know, when schools are being controlled. No one can give us great guidance on this because no one's ever done this before. We are, we are the pioneers. That's why when we're going down to the DOE and and the commissioner's talking about and and again, I'm not slight sliding the commissioner, she doesn't know that, you know, when it says, when it says community control or local control, your local control is not local, it's regional, right? And so when you form that site selection, that was the local control, that was the the vehicle for local control. That's where you got to take that matrix and make some decisions. But because it was regional, everything was a negotiation and a vote and a and a, you know, and a this and a that. So, you know, we may have said something here to 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 benefit one community and then on the other side, you know, it's pulling it back this way. That's why this process was so difficult because it's never been done before and there's no script for it.
So the fact that we think something was wrong and broken, that script can't be rewound and reevaluated? And that's what we're asking as a board is saying that script is flowing, it's ebbing and flowing, it seems to be ebbing this way more and more, and we want to say, hey, this got screwed up.
Yeah.
We need to relook at what we did because we know it's wrong. Let's reevaluate what's going on and then let's satisfy these other four criteria that the commissioner's looking for.
We've always told you that, we told the public that, you know, site selection, if 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 we go to a straw poll and and things go really haywire, we're never going to be able to revisit that. We're not saying that not on a, on a, on a technical, yeah, you can always go revisit anything, right? But A, you got to think about funding and B, you got to think about how the other partners are going to receive that. So let's flip the script here, the Fort Kent site would have been selected, this same thing would be happening in another community. There would, there would be another community saying, we're not agreeing to this and that. And they would have said, let's revisit site selection. And I think your answer would have been, no, we're not revisiting site selection because that's, we always knew this was going to happen in one way or the other. And and I and I agree, I mean, not a perfect process, but I think we always knew that once that decision was made, and I kick myself for not speaking up the day it was suggested that we go ahead and score that matrix one time just to see where the numbers, and that was in the middle of the process, I kick myself for not yelling out and saying, stop, don't do that. But I've never done this either. You know, I I've never done this.
And that was Jake's job and I think he failed tremendously in that process. All right? And then I think it would be a different story if we had eighty to twenty vote that said it was in Fort Kent or a ninety to ten vote. I mean, I can see where they're coming from, right? Because the majority of their population says, yes, it's in Frenchville, right? And if it would have been the majority of the population said, Madawaska had said, no, it's not going to be in Fort Kent, they would have a right to guess what was going on. I think the vote speaks for itself. When you have a fifty fifty vote, it's very telling. And I think it's warranted for us to reevaluate the work that was completed on this project. And when you bring up cost, the data is all there, right? It's not going to cost three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars to re-score this site, I would dare say.
You you can't have...
All the data is there.
You can't have one person be superintendent of three places and be executive director and it's going to work. Never going to happen. You can be outstanding in all the fields, but there's so much conflict of interest that you, you, you know, basically, uh our board feels that there's a lot of stuff that we're not getting done because you're not in a position to do it because you don't agree with our vote, with your vote. I don't think you agree with the board's decision on not, basically, we're, we do not want the site selection. At some point in time, in the near future, you're going to have to decide what you're going to want to do in the future. And hopefully it'll be with us, but if not, we need somebody that's going to take care of us. Right now, we're not being taken care of.
I've never, I've never, I've never disagreed with anything. And if you go watch any meeting that I have in another district, I'm always very careful to defend your interests as well as defending the interests of the other boards. I feel that I do that quite well and I don't know anybody, anybody else put in this position. And I, I'm not one who boasts myself, but I don't know anyone that can do that. I just want to press upon you that regardless of this school happens, we're already making plans about how we can make Valley Unified, three sites, virtually offering programs amongst three schools, we're already planning for Plan B. And the work we have done has been amazing. And just because we've hit a snag with with this doesn't mean that everything needs to unravel and I hope it doesn't. If this school doesn't happen because it just doesn't happen, we still have a future to take care of. And and I think, I think this shared administration can really take you to those Plan Bs and those Plan Cs. I really truly do, um because it's a, it's an amazing team we have and it's amazing work that we're doing. And yes, we've been, we've been hampered by 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 this snag in the project and we've been hampered by COVID, which we are rocking out, by the way. Um and and we're going to continue to do some excellent work if we're allowed to do so.
I'm a little burned out about this. Do you guys want to keep moving?
There's any other?
I just, you know, I've just watched all this, if I squirm, you're all good people, good grief. You know, I've been working a lot, I have not been privy to everything you've been privy to. You know, when the push came to try and get some kind of statement from the unions to try to support, well, basically, people felt things weren't supported, ideas weren't supported. You know, I said, look, my community is the fifty fifty community. I've got to talk to the people, teachers, only as a union statement. Six to one in the two days that I was taking input. I sent the letter to every union member. I'm not trying to defend what I do right now. There were a thousand different places that this thing can fall apart. And I hear every one of them and they all make incredible sense. There's one moment when it's a little difficult, we do easy, the impossible takes a little longer. This is that. And for you guys, this is that. If this, I think it's, I would go, Toby, to the other towns, say the same darn thing.
Good.
If this school had to end up, I will, if some, if the situation arises, I'm the union president here, so that's where my line of action is. But the idea that sane, good people get together under a pressure cooker situation and try to come up with a way to stop this from failing when there's so much on the line, dollars and cents are just ridiculously on the line. And the idea of the last five years of work and the way people have worked together in a really positive way in these three communities, teachers for sure, you know, it wasn't, I get three people complaining negatively in those two days and two of them said they supported the idea, they just didn't like how it had gone down. That's the three that were negative. And another day or two later, I got two more, the next day, next night after I'd already sent in the okay. So I think that if there's a way to make it, I don't know, but I, hearing what you said tonight, Ben and Giselle, about how things went down there in Augusta, that certainly doesn't sound very promising. None of the other people will send the money to other places. If we still have a little finger hold on it, maybe that the others will, they're, I don't think there's any, the bad guys could be anywhere in the other communities being the ones that said, I heard about insults and stuff, one of the teachers talked to me, said, people, my family was insulted and stuff, but I've heard that the insults went both ways. And that, so, I mean, that's just the nature of this kind of a project, I think. And that's where I think it's worthy, that's my personal opinion. I think you guys have gone through a ton of stuff, are going through a little more, I personally would ask, see if there's a way to make it come together. And here in Fort Kent, whoever, it doesn't, that that they say to themselves too, I mean, that's something, you know what, we can't let this go just because of that, maybe we have to give in and go there. The idea that both sides sit there like the capitalists in the Montagues and say, you know, uh, no, this ain't going to work, you know, and then each one points the fingers at the other, that's just predictable, but I don't think it's the best outcome. Good morning.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you.
Yep.
And it isn't the end all. I mean, if this doesn't work, Kate's words tonight, those are pretty loud, this speaks a lot, which she said. I mean, we're talking about doing it for the kids and we have a good thing here. If we can get a new school, make it bigger and better, do it the right way, then great. But if not, we still have a good thing here. Anything else on Valley Unified?
Please no.
I'm now currently not insured, by the way.
Watch your step on the way out, slippery.
Uh, we have a resignation. Um, I I received this back in October two. Uh, Mr. Sarah, please accept this letter as a notification, I'm leaving my position at M S A D twenty-seven on October sixteen. I appreciate the professional, social, personal development opportunities I had while working at C H S. Please let me know if I can give any assistance during this transition. Master Jody Sharet, um, it's a, it's quite a loss to have Jody go, but definitely I'm sure she did not come to that decision easily, so I would need a motion to approve Jody's resignation.
Sub move. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Inadverses?
Um, we do have new hires. First new hire is for the academic interventionist and that's, that was Monica Seer's position. Monica's last day was last Friday. Uh, John Coletta has provided you with a letter. I'm not going to read the entire letter, but um the recommendation is for Alexa Macy and Alexa's um coming to us. Actually, she was in a tech in Madawaska and um aspires to work closely with intervention and English language learning. So that's the recommendation.
Motion. Sub move. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Inadverses?
And then we have another recommendation for educational technician three. This is actually to fill the vacancy um for Jody Sharet's position. And Mr. Coletta again supplied you with a letter and he's recommending Brooke Associate for V E Tech three.
Sub move. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any discussion? All those in favor? Inadents?
We have an opening for a speech pathologist, if you know any, and part-time cafeteria helpers at the elementary school.
Elementary school gym.
And this is just a talking point. I know that I shared with you how I aspire to try to get our school a new gym with CRF funds. And that was ultimately denied, not approved. Obviously, a great deal of conversation went into it because the DOE was nulling it over for over a week and a half. But in the end, they felt that this would have been something that they fear would have been audited. And it was such a big project. So, I'm showing you a picture of Fort Kent Elementary School. And you can see on the top, and I'm sorry, it's kind of hard to see right now, but in this area right here, which is the backside of the school, this is actually the staff entrance right here. We are proposing a one hundred and ten foot long by seventy foot wide gymnasium bubble, if you will. It was, it's not, it's not the same type of bubble that's air-fed as some of these units are. This one was actually framed, it actually had a, had a frame to it. And we were looking at potentially tapping into the biomass line. You can't see it on the screen, but the biomass line basically goes into the school right here. And we're potentially thinking about a heated slab to heat that facility, and then have a vestibule connected to the school so that you wouldn't have to go outside to get to it. I just, I want to put this out there because I do believe, and Mr. Netto's here, he can, he can talk to this as well. If something like this could happen, and I know it can't happen with CRF funds, but if we look at a long-term commitment to do something like this, I think it would really, really change a lot of what can be done in the school. I think if we, if we design it right and possibly look at, instead of, you know, flooring, we look at multipurpose, rubberized flooring, and have, have the facility used for indoor soccer tournaments, you know, indoor, it's some basketball, different sport tournaments. I think we can really get a huge benefit out of this thing. The lifetime on the, on the fabric that goes on the outside is rated between fifteen and twenty years. But they say because of our region, that they're leaning more towards the fifteen-year mark at when you need to possibly replace the fabric. And the fabric cost to replace, I believe he said, is twenty, twenty percent or twenty bucks? Yeah, twenty percent of the, of the cost of, of the unit. So, we estimate that based on the figures to be about a forty thousand dollar replacement cost of the, of the fabric. That's, that's less than a roof on, on a school.
What was the size, Ben?
A hundred and ten by seventy-five.
And what's the cost?
The over, the overall cost for, for the dome itself, and I have the quote right here. The, the quote, it was four hundred and five thousand, seven hundred dollars. I've asked us to file this for future reference. We were looking at a slab cost, I think we had, we had estimated between eighty-five thousand or seventy-five and eighty-five thousand.
It was fifty-six with groundwork, but that was not a heated slab.
Right. Yeah, so I think, I think with the heated, it was more like seventy-five thousand for, for that. And then you're looking at, you know, just the flooring and, and, you know, equipment at that, at that point in time. So, you can say about half a million dollars. Construction for a gym, if we were going to add on a gym to our school, you can't do that for five hundred thousand dollars. You know, you'd have to build it to code, it'd have to be sprinkled, it'd have to, I mean, there would be some, some big costs associated with that. I'm just putting that out there as food for thought. I know Mr. Netto right now is looking into Alfon, you know, funding in some different venues. But if, if there's appetite to consider looking at this from, from the standpoint of, of a financing option from the district or anything else, I really do feel like the only thing missing from that elementary school is a proper gym. And I think there's potential for this to solve that, that problem.
Is this something we could do with the town? In conjunction with the town to make it more of a direct community area? Because I'd be supportive of that.
I'd like to see a price on a real building as well. I mean, I, I would feel better, I mean, I know it costs more, but I would feel better, I mean, I'm sure the dome is nice and all, but it doesn't, it doesn't inspire confidence in me.
Well, they're, they're everywhere around Portland, huh?
Yeah, that's Portland.
Yeah, yeah. And he says that they have some in Maine from, from his company, and I can get you a list.
My major concern is the snow removal situation. How that backs up against the building.
These are snow rated, so if you look at, if you look at where we are, the snow would run off on the, on the length side. That's where the snow would fall, so on either side of the, of the parking lot, if you will, is how we would look at it, windfall towards the school or towards the soccer field. They are snow rated, and, and, you know, all those things, you know, I tried to press upon him, we live in northern Maine. He says, we built these in Canada, so, you know, he, he, he goes.
A list in Canada would be actually more helpful than a list from Maine.
Sure.
Yeah, but it's all Vancouver, I'm not biting.
But we, you know, we always have conversations about how we can, how we can be better as a district. I think these are the ways we have to start thinking and looking, not just sustaining what we have, but looking at, you know, improving some things.
So what's your, what's your biggest challenge or as far as bringing you to wanting this facility? I know right now we have a cafeteria that doubles as a gym, and right now with COVID, it's obviously undersized.
Yep.
But during normal times.
You, you think about the, the athletics that we hold in that, in that CHS gym. I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not, in my mind, it's not adequate enough. You, you're playing on a, on a asbestos floor, towels are popping up. And I know we have to address those things too, but it's, it's a cafeteria, it's not a gym. We would need a gym.
You could have, you could have your recesses inside on bad days.
You think about Travis, you know, Travis, when, when lunch is being served on a normal year, non-COVID year, he's got to move those, those phys ed classes to the small gym. Small gym is, it's an industrial yard.
It's not a gym.
It's not a gym, you know? So.
At least forty percent, I think, of our phys ed classes are in this gym. We try to schedule our younger students to go in there because obviously, they take the bus first.
Yep.
So, that itself is like sometimes a scheduling nightmare when you're trying to make sure your sixth graders have phys ed either early in the morning, but not before eight-thirty because we have to make sure we clean up for breakfast, and after one-fifteen, one-thirty because you have to make sure that all the tables are up and we clean up.
Yeah, I'd be curious, the cost would be a brick, stone, and, you know, straw or plastic, whichever one you get.
We can look in that for sure.
Big red wolf.
Yeah.
Robin Netto Arena sounds really nice.
Yeah.
I was thinking the same thing.
All right, I just wanted to have a conversation on that.
Custodial personnel stipend.
So, we, we put out a, an internal posting for a stipend last week. And this stipend was based on conversations that we've been having for a little while, based on some, some needs that we have specific to who's, who's the guy that, or gal, that the Fort Kent elementary staff go to when Mr. Martin Rudy is, is not available? Because Rudy can't be in two places at once, and Rudy is primarily housed in this. We don't have the need for another management position. You know, we eliminated that position two years ago because, you know, Rudy is effectively managing the staff, you know, scheduling, the, the observations, and worked with Peter and doing all that. But in, in, in that same light, we have, we have some individuals that are going above and beyond, and they're not only custodial, doing their custodial work, they're doing repairs. They're, they're doing, you know, they're, they're carpenters, they're, they're doing everything above and beyond. So, we, we felt it only fair to have the conversation about offering a custodial personnel or custodial lead stipend to honor the work that, that's being done. And so, I, I threw this around with the, the union representative, Lawrence Smith. It took a while to get him to, to engage on, in this conversation. But finally, at the end of last week, he had come to an agreement that a lot of schools do something like this. A stipend is a really good way to do it, and we posted it internally for, for anyone to, to, to bite onto it. We only had one applicant, and it's, it's the one applicant that we had in mind because it's the one person who's doing that work and does so with, with a smile on his face, and he's, he's just really transformed that building. So, we would like to recommend that we, we offer this weekly stipend. It's, it's twenty-five dollars a week, fifty dollars per paycheck, and I think Lucy, it comes out to thirteen hundred and fifty for the year as, as a stipend to just honor this, the work that this, so, that this person is doing. So, we're actually recommending Tom Connect to receive this custodial stipend.
That's sixty cents an hour. Does that seem?
Yeah, I mean, the only complaint I have is because social media, of course, blew up. And when I read the description, I didn't recognize that this is what this was. And I'm not being overly critical, Ben, on this. I can be critical about other things, but I think it would have been nice to know this before it went up because I, I felt like I didn't know what this person was talking about. It was a former, what's his name? And, and I, and I felt terribly like, how could the board approve this? And I'm like, I don't even know what this is. And that was my response, like, don't blame me, dude, I haven't even seen this, I don't know what this is. And then you sent out the email saying this is what it is, like, oh, I didn't know what that was, I just didn't know what it was because I didn't recognize it, because I think we met back in July? No, 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 we barely closed down.
It was June.
It was, yeah, it was a while ago, and I completely spaced it, and it made for a very-
And I'm disappointed that an internal posting got out to the public. You know, when, when we released it, you know, Jackie says, are we ready? I said, just send it to the employees, internal posting, and then.
Yeah. And, and, you know, knowing what this is, this is not their position.
It's not, it's, it's not supervisory, it's not any of those things.
Well, so, that's my only comment, you say not management, but then it says directs custodians in performance duties.
Yeah, directs them because they, they already go, but he's not managing their workflow, not even doing their scheduling, none of that.
That's the only part that makes me, so it could be an issue somewhere that would make me think that this is conflicting.
Yeah. No, Rudy is the supervisor, and that's, that stays.
Sub move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Inadents?
So, I think you all know the, the background story on this, this, this calendar change recommendation. We sent out a survey, we, we made a recommendation. The, the teachers here were not fully on board with the original recommendation we were going to grant you. So, the negotiations committee, who's Toby was there, Keith was there, and Barry was there, met with the union executive committee, and we came up through discussion. We had long discussions, collaborative discussions, there were, you know, a lot of positivity and, and things said. But at the end, we made a recommendation that we would bring a calendar change to you that we take all of our current early releases and move them to full-day workshop days. And also, and that would address the long-term planning needs that, that folks are, are looking for, but even more so the short-term needs. We would move to start dismissing students at two o'clock to allow for more time at the end of the day to, to plan and touch base with, with, with remote learners that we currently don't have the time for. So that's the proposal that we pitched out to the teachers. You have in front of you the more time survey, part two, and the results were pretty overwhelming. Ninety-four percent to six percent supporting this as a logical next step. Now, I say this to you, but I want to be very open and honest that with the, with the governor's latest directive to change the indoor setting from fifty to a hundred, a hundred back to fifty, I may be coming back to you shortly with a new recommendation based on what the teachers are saying as we move forward. I still think this is the best way to move now because this is what they've approved almost unanimously. But I, I don't know what the future holds.
My understanding of the situation was that they were going to have that additional day a month, that they wouldn't be required to do training if they didn't want to, correct?
Optional PD.
Okay.
So if you look at the calendar, you'll see that in September, we had an early release here on the eighteenth. We had an early release in October on the twenty-third. Now, moving forward, starting on November twenty, it would be a full workshop day, every month workshop day. It's, it's a day for teachers to plan, it's a day for, for team meetings to happen if they so choose to utilize that, tons of that. And, and like Toby just mentioned, we're going to offer optional PD. We've just secured a, a new platform using carryover title form, uh, title funds. Sharon will explain.
Yeah, so if you're interested in going to look at it, it's Otis, O-T-I-S dot T-E-Q dot com. And what it is, is a platform for professional development done virtually with a wide array of different options for teachers. And the beauty of this is they can go and self-select things that are of interest to them. In addition, we can create content within the program itself. So, let's just say new teacher orientation, we can create all the curriculum we want based on what we would do with new teacher orientation. And we have analytics, so we can see who's in, people can get certifications, so they can get certification in Google Educator Level One, Level Two. There's a variety of different things that they can take online. So, there's stuff related to administration, there's stuff related to technology, there's social, emotional. It's, it's a lot of technology that we did in the spring, so they can learn how to use Flipgrid, they can use various formats, whatever is of interest to them. So, I'm really excited about the platform, and I think teachers will really like it as well because clearly, we're not going to be traveling for professional development so that it can go to them and they can pick what is, what their needs are. So, we just secured, it's just a matter of, I had to write that in for carryover funds for Title II A, and I, I received pre-approval for that because I wanted to make sure that they would cover it, but at the end of the day, I have to wait for final approval. So I'm hoping within a week or two so we can secure that. And we could also use it during snow days perhaps, for teachers to do some professional development.
Thank you, Sharon.
Yeah, I'm excited.
The only concern I have on it for the parents is just daycare, for that little bit of extra time that you're getting home early.
We'll have the buses stretch over.
The weather's going to help that. How good was?
Oh, God.
That was a good one.
Okay.
Almost blew up.
I hope you don't have COVID there, I think that came this way, Barry.
How did the first survey go with the teachers?
Top of my ears, true.
The first survey, it was, it was heavily leaning towards, in this district, early releases every week.
Okay.
Is what it was heavy.
Like a, like one day a week early release?
Yeah, and a lot of comments on a Wednesday early release would really break up the loop.
Do you see that as being if we need to fall back as our fallback position?
I think that would be the ideal situation as a next logical step.
Yeah.
It seems like that would help that.
It will and won't, it, it's, it becomes tricky on a, on a scheduling side, but the administrators already know, they're already working on that as a Plan B. You know, as far as getting equity with, with, with classes. If, if always the same period is being interrupted on that Wednesday half-day weekly, we'd have to get creative with making sure that we flip some, some schedules so that it's not always the same classes.
Is there anything we can do to help community members with daycare? Like to get students- Like to get students to go assist the nexter body in the house so they can take care of the children? Just curious.
Yeah.
You know, because they have the one, two, three play group in, you know, St. John, you know, the school. I'm just wondering what we can do to assist parents in this regard.
Anything that we do with, with child daycare is, we're also held to the same standards for social distancing and, and the size limits. So we can, but probably up to a limit.
Okay.
It's, it's tough. Our first step is to make sure that we can secure something for our staff. If we can at least do that as a first measure, you know, if, if we have to go to a hybrid model and, you know, your kids are not on the same cycle with you, we'd like to have something for our staff children.
That makes sense.
Hey, Ben, on these surveys, I like numbers. On these surveys, can you have like a scale one to 10 or one to five or something? Because it's overwhelming, yes, but then some of the comments still do have some concerns like, if I was hogtied, one hand and one foot would be super helpful, but all of them are even.
Yeah. Like, you know, you gave some, some of the feedback says, I'm really only getting 15 minutes a day. Like, what would be your preference? An hour, two hours? I'd be curious to see that kind of data.
I, I, I don't think we're ever going to satisfy everybody.
You'll get what you asked for.
But, but also, but also, one of the things that might be interesting is, and I probably sound like a broken record, but, and I know it would be hell for the administration, but maybe what helps these guys is different than what helps these guys as far as the solutions for the elementary school.
They're completely different.
Might be different than, because it sounds like the dual, the remote learning. And in class, it, it seems like it's what's super, you know, struggling here. Meanwhile, there, it seems like more it's the, the constant on and the constant management of.
Right. So, yeah, and, and we had some conversations around that at the end of our, our meeting. And when we left, we're, we're currently exploring, you know, what if we came to you guys with, with, you know, the option to hire two or three educational technicians to help with remote learning for some of these people? I don't know that we can solve an issue at the high school with certification being so concrete. I'm not going to ask you to hire an exercise teacher, math teacher, English teacher for remote learners. But if we have a tech that can be directly tasked with those things, I think that will be the answer. So we're exploring how that would look like to take to you guys for future consideration.
Because I, I know, and so my kids will do the remote learning. And the one that has a dedicated teacher is, is having a very different experience than the one that's having, that has both. And, and through feedback, I mean, they've been awesome about adjusting and, and managing, but their days are completely different. And so I can see how it would be really different for the teacher.
Absolutely. And we even had those discussions today when we were thinking about hybrid model. Should we be asking our cohort A to come to school and cohort B tuning in at the same time for our high school? And, and, I mean, John looking, he said, you're going to, we're going to kill the teachers if we do that. So we almost have to treat it as your, your in-school day is your instruction day. Your out-of-school day is your work day.
Yeah.
You know, so that you're getting the instruction when you're here, then now go home and work. So that's how we're framing it.
Yeah. In the classroom, some teachers can't keep the students on Zoom. Ms. Socia, her internet's awful in her room. Like, all of us just have horrible connection in her room. And the students get kicked off Zoom all the time. Like, she can't screen share to the students on Zoom, for example. She have to be, she'll have to be like, okay, go to this website. And then she'll have to wait until they get on the website because she can't share her screen with them because like it just crashes the internet in her room. Not all my teachers have that issue because like some classes don't have anyone online.
Right.
Or they don't show up every day, I guess. And, but yeah, there's some teachers that it's like they have a harder time if they have more students online. And it kind of makes class run less smoothly, I guess, for the people that are there. Because you're waiting on them, which is fair to them, obviously, but it's not necessarily fair to the people in class that are doing that.
And that goes the, the other way too. Like, the kids at home are spending a lot of time waiting. It's just.
Yeah, exactly. Or they get kicked out of Zoom and the teacher doesn't see it. And then 15 minutes later, she's like, they missed my whole lesson. Because it doesn't tell you if they're kicked out with your screen sharing. Then they get in and they're like, oh, sorry, guys.
Well, I think it was interesting in the meeting that we had was that the difference between even teachers within the same school as to their take on what their needs and wants were were very, very different just based on grade level, like wing, which wing they were in in the elementary school made a difference, like.
Even the same wing.
Well, well, no, no, it was different wings.
But there were two teachers that teach same age group that had different opinions.
Yeah. But I found the starkest difference between the different wings, you know, and it was, it was curious to see like, so I, like, I think you're right, like the, the solution for one, like, like the solution for the two different schools are going to be different. Because even within the same building, like we, we were hearing different things, you know.
So is this proposal a happy medium for meeting John and Robbie's needs for his teachers?
I think we, we felt really good coming out of that with the feedback and then following up with the survey. I think, I think we're, you know, we've got general support.
And the fact that you're looking at it at the end of the year, if you need to tweak it to kids.
We, we did say though that, you know, we would, we would do it for a time. You know, we'll do it till Christmas and then we'll revisit. We may have to revisit sooner.
And I, and I, I made a point of asking the teachers who were having, who reported having the toughest time, if this was going to be enough. Like, I wanted to see an affirmative from them. I wasn't like, we were pretty explicit, like, is this going to help you? And the answer was yes. And I'm not going to wrestle with them. They, they say they're fine, you know.
Okay.
Need a motion on this, Ben?
Yeah.
So move. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, get out of this. Approval of computation and declaration of votes.
Listen, you have a motion. And this was simply an oversight. We, we should have had you do a separate one from the budget. And this is for the, the.
You win. Just have to do the course. And once you're done that, you're signed.
So just. Voted that the computation and declaration of votes dated November 2, 2020 and attached here to be approved. Further voted that the computation and declaration of votes be entered upon the records of main school administrative district number 27. Further voted that a certified copy of the computation and declarations of votes be sent to each municipal clerk within the district. That's my motion.
Give a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, get out of this. Do you need a hand or a towel?
Can I do a little service announcement?
Kamala, it is, um, third, please, please, November 3. Yes, you go vote.
What's that?
Already voted.
Matter of fact, I don't know how many times.
Oh, sorry.
Many, if you want.
You're mailing ballots, so I can't vote.
A little crispy, did I?
Yeah, a little bit.
Based on Monday's particular.
It was, it was a quarter day. You're at the quarter E30.
Will anybody bring their sleeping bag?
Oh, that's awesome. We should have, we should have tagged in and out halfway through it because it changed it up. We don't know if that's something.
I kept getting some names backwards, but I feel bad.
What am I being?
I do it a lot.
It's had a case on the Mondays, but I think it's the last thing all semester. I had two sisters show up. Their unusual last name is like, sisters? Yeah.
So that would confirm the meeting, the motion to enter into executive session.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?